This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, Tuesday, December 14th, the meeting of the planning commission is called.
Tuesday, December 14th, the meeting of the planning commission is called.
Tuesday, December.
Now you can go.
That guy annoyed Charles.
Is that kind of one of those break across the site? We're in. Okay. Susan, so important, meeting of the planning commission is called, or we'll call Mary Benton. Are you here?
I'm here.
Lloyd Colston?
Here.
Joni Kirk Spicer? Paisley Howardson? Charles Jennings?
President.
Ian Coon?
Here.
And Cody Richardson?
Here.
I'm gonna set up, hijack the meeting for a second. We need to do something about chair for the January meeting. We're looking, hopefully getting some appointments at the January 10th city commission meeting. But there's certainly no guarantee and besides that, we need a chair before that meeting. So what I'm proposing that we do is we elect a vice chair at this meeting, who will take over as chair for January. We can obviously have another election then. But because we not having current vice chair anymore, because our vice chair is the chair. We need to. We need to figure out somebody that can be, so is there anybody here that would be interested in being chair for at least the January meeting?
I'm moved on, I should say, so he goes. We do have a recommendation volunteer from Ian Seikis, we'll call that the motion. Ian Coon and a second on the motion from Lloyd Colston for Ian Coon to be the.
We like vice chair.
Vice chair.
I'm saying that because technically I have a chair.
Vice chair for the planning commission in preparation for the January planning commission meeting. Any discussion, any question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair unanimously, so Ian will turn the role of vice chair in this meeting. And then in the absence of the chair for the next, for the January meeting, you could step into that role.
They just use the fellow.
Bring your will.
Depending on if we get any appointments or whatever, we could look at again. We definitely need to appoint a vice chair again.
We also need a person to replace Charles on the historic preservation board. So get a recommendation.
Go away totally that, Joe.
A lot of reorganization items, but let's get you restocked first.
Yeah, the other thing is that in the absence of the chair, I chaired the planning commission meetings. Actually, still hold the hat of the chair for the order zoning appeals. So I don't think, you have anything? Okay, so we don't need to.
We'll just, I'll face that.
Or just nothing I don't have to do.
Essentially, that's what will happen is whoever the planning commission chair is, is just going to have to take that over till. It's goofy, but we, I'm trying to fix this so it's a little less goofy, Jay.
It's a little weird.
There is a public hearing.
Okay.
It'll be fun, it'll be fun, you'll be fine. We'll go ahead and query for, we don't really have any public here, I don't know if we have public online of the North America. Or comment, they have anyone listening in.
That might have been. Or they dropped off.
Yeah, it seemed like that was where feedback was from also. Okay. So there being no one present from the public to speak, comments on the agenda. I trust that you had a chance to review, peruse the minutes from the last meeting. And. If we are ready to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the Tuesday, November 9th meeting, will we approve?
Second.
Have mo- motion and a second on the November 9th meeting.
I second the motion.
Yes. Motion, second, Mr. Coon, Mr. Colston, Mr. Coon, any question, Kirk? Okay. I'll approve minutes of the November 9th meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion, the minutes are approved. Okay. Super. So the agenda item for tonight is the comprehensive plan discussion, I believe we're on chapter eight. Before we do that, Andrew, if you have any other things on the news or anything that you wanted to talk about.
Chapter. Not really, I think at this point, we'll just try to get through our transition and then probably reestablish. I mean, we did, we did kind of try to come up with a priority based timeline plan for parks. I've kind of run a first draft in the beautification board, but it needs more work before I'm ready to present it to you guys. But it's coming along, which is good. Transportation, it's just dragging. Are you gonna be able to be there Friday?
Yes.
I'm hoping we can kind of hold trans systems feed to the fire, at least, I told them, if nothing else, I've got to have your recommendations on our summit, because I have to turn around and give that to Chris Minn and so he can make any changes to the plans in the next like month. Because we're letting bids on that project in February. I don't know if we're gonna change anything, they're looking at the possibility of maybe like a left turn lane just for the duration from Kansas to Sonic. I don't know if that's even feasible, but they're, they're gonna make engineering recommendations and then Chris will figure it out when it gets in there. And that one's not what I plan, I mean, obviously we don't want to do anything next year, but from there, they're gonna work south through the rest of summit, make recommendations, they're gonna look at Madison, they're gonna look at Eighth Street, and then they're gonna look at the different school zone areas. And that's really where our focus is gonna be based on all the crash data. It's just so slow. I'll be honest, I'm very frustrated with the speed of what we're getting from trans systems and what's really aggravating is we paid them then $25,000. We just got a quote on a traffic study for just Jefferson area. It's now $25,000 and I'm thinking, in hindsight, maybe I should just head to Rice County, pay for the traffic study, we could have done it. We probably have more on paper right now. So I don't know how bad, I think Rainey's gonna try to get the school district to pay for it, I'm sure they're in a hole, but. We could try to get a state grant to pay for that piece of it, but. So that area up around Jefferson, that's all Kirk and Michael, trans system just kind of peeled off of that entirely now. I don't know if they're mad about it, and that's why they're so slow. So it's just taking forever, I apologize for that, but we will get them moving. I feel better, the last time I talked to him, that was fun. Thought I'd just, I literally got a lot of fire in every, after every meeting, like, what's the next step? To the plan, so maybe March we'll get it done and back to you guys. So I mean, just, I would expect, we're gonna be working on the common plan for probably the first half of next year, unfortunately. I wish it wasn't like that, but I just don't know how else to, you know, pieces are moving, you're moving and we've got transition. But I mean, that's the main one that's a problem, I think you're probably, you're gonna get good pace on revisions, obviously. So I think we can have easier chapters done in the next few months, it's really gonna come back to parks, recreation, land use and transportation.
How would that work in actual shape?
Yeah. So expect to see drafts and it's gonna be probably out of order a little bit, just bear with us. But we, I would like to draft this whole stinking thing up, no later than May or June. I really don't want to drag this well in the next year. I mean, the commission, the new commission needs this, and to be honest, the capital improvement plan committee needs this. If we're gonna do that again, we'll probably have to fudge it a little bit this year. But by the time we're getting into the budget for '23, which is really summer, we should have a comp plan, at least substantially completed, maybe not formally adopted, but we need to solve it. Otherwise, we're just pushing everything out in our year. So that's, that's a long-winded update, I'm not so much to show you guys, but I will try to have a little bit of tangible stuff for you in January if I can.
Okay, does anybody like a copy of chapter eight?
I would, I got your.
I think anyway.
I have it printed out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I gave kind of an intro to this chapter last month, so I won't do that again. So I'm just gonna go through each of these sections, kind of like what we've done in the past, but some of these other chapters. So the introduction, largely not, I didn't do anything with that, I don't think I did anything wrong with it, basically just talking about a purpose chapter. Vision is kind of the same thing. I didn't really take any notes on it when I was going through it, because. Alergy, I think we still kind of, we might change what we put in this vision, but what's in there really isn't an issue. We definitely still want to continue to plan for our future growth. You know, like the 77 corridor, if I said, and we definitely still want to encourage new development to be here. That part is not much. So the next section is gonna need to change. This 8.3 is the analysis from the 2003 plan. And I don't know about you, how you guys feel about it, but I think we need to put 2003 in. There's some stuff, there's some of these statements in here that are decent. And so what I was gonna propose is that we just kind of rework these, so it's like one paragraph. And that's just acknowledging both the 2003 plan and the 2013 plan all in one paragraph, maybe two paragraphs. Just knows that we've been in the planning cycle, we've got some stuff that's been done, we've got some stuff that's been done, we just kind of catch that. The other problem is I noted that the recommendations that came from chapter eight. For some reason, in 2003, future land use and transportation were the same chapter. Don't really agree with that.
Well, that's what the Nokia thing.
That's, that's what that was.
I did want to say, I had actually never amazingly read through all this, so I noticed a few things that jumped out at me, just if you wanna kind of keep them in mind. The entrance ways thing is still a huge issue. In fact, the beautification board did just talk about that the last meeting, they were, Candace Hendricks in particular really wants to do something, it's just spruce up. So we're talking about some signage and maybe doing some of the underpasses, but I commend her for taking charge. She's engaging rigmarie in that and trying to work on maybe getting some community partners to chip in, so it's not just a city thing. So that's something I think we need to keep in our goals, or maybe not here, it's not really a land use site, but. I mean, 20 years in, I think it's still a problem for us, because we just don't have a lot of money laying around, we're making things already. You know, so we need to get a little creative, but I think we've, we've got some money left over from EverG, there's some grants out there, there's some things we can do. What we really needed was someone to be passionate about it from the community and off the staff, and I think she's doing that. I know she's involved with the Main Street group as well, I think that's gonna tie in a lot of what Main Street's working on, and they may even be able to access some funding. So that's, that's one thing. There was something else in here I thought was kind of interesting.
What's also interesting is those, the first section is actually from chapter six, though they had land use analysis and future land uses, two different chapters.
Don't know why. That's weird. Eighth Street, Norfolk Skyline Road, that's a dead issue, right?
Okay.
That's Creekstone, Center Turn Lane, Summit Street, Kansas to Radio Lane, here we are, 20 years.
Something interesting.
Still wrestling with that. Yeah. Kansas and Summit intersection, I think that has been upgraded somewhat, we will be restriping that as part of the pro through next year.
But I didn't want to mention that in this chapter.
Right, I agree. That was the main thing, I just, I just noticed some things, I'm just like, man, it's like Andy said, you know, if we don't put metrics on here and grade ourselves, we're just gonna keep recycling the same goals 20 years down the line, so.
I thought this one was kind of interesting, and the reason I thought it was interesting is because it's way too vague. It says, "The future land use plan for the area north of Linden Avenue seeks to preserve the existing residential character. The area has not experienced a number of commercial conversions and areas should be preserved as residential." Now tell me, anyone in this room, if you can figure out where that's talking about and how horrible.
So Linden, that's pretty much Ken area, territory, isn't it?
Well, what, what reason I even bring that up is because for some reason, instead of being directly quoted, some of these were summarized, and in this case, that was not summarized well. And I actually found the goal for. There. Where was it? Linden to Kansas, it's on, it's actually talking about Chestnut to Linden, and it starts off saying. Let me just see if I can find it, it's just in the north of Linden. Here it is, so the way it actually was in the 2003 plan was numerous retail sites are presently located in the area from Chestnut to Linden. The area south of Linden is shown as commercial in the future land use plan. Due to the presence of several existing retail uses. The future land use plan for the area north of Linden, which is where that came in, seeks to preserve the existing residential character, the area has not experienced a number of commercial conversions and areas should be preserved as residential. Well, the interesting thing about that one.
Isn't that Summit Street?
It's yeah, it's a Summit Street. We completely ignored it.
And did the mixed use.
We not have.
And, okay, I get it.
I don't know why, why we even put it in there, we totally ignored it.
Wow.
Because we did.
Don't tell Ken about that, please.
You, it won't be in this new plan.
Yeah.
It'll be totally.
Matthew, it's up to these.
I just thought it was interesting that some of these are not direct quotes, and so be careful if I read them, we will not be doing that.
What was our guy, Mr.?
Jim Calhoun. Oh, yeah, okay. I don't know what he was.
It seems to me like what he, it was, it just said it was a Summit Street thing, and when we were trying to decide what we need to have again, residential frontage to Summit Street there, we had had, you know, I want to say, remember there was an area where, might be lower than that, that we didn't have an active fast food place just south of Kansas before our lease moved in there.
I don't know, though, we had Sandy's and we had Hardee's before that.
Well, I mean, we did have, that's why I said active, we had some in there, but they had all closed before we came back.
Before my back.
And then we didn't have the Dollar Store there. We had the Hilltop was there, and we're just trying to decide where, and so I think, I think when Jim Calhoun was looking at that, he was saying you kind of have a combination of things going on there. And maybe, I want to say, in some of his words, he, he recommended that to be mixed use, because we already did have some commercial properties there, we were trying to decide whether we're gonna go forward with developing that commercially or just trying to infill that with housing.
And I definitely want to dig into that particular corridor when we do the future land use plan. Get too much on the tangent rate, it's a moment, but. Basically, I wanted to talk about that section all of 8.3, because it's, it's old goals, some of which have been met, some of which have been ignored, and some of which just really aren't very good anymore. So that's why I'm suggesting that we take what's still okay in there, kind of summarize it, steal some of it for our own use for the new plan, maybe, but not have this three pages or whatever it is, a summary from. That 18-year-old plan? That's because I think it just makes us look bad.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, we have 18-year-old goals.
So we're, I think to get rid of that, just acknowledging that.
That's what we talked about when we were looking at it. Because we had people, kind of get some favoritism, and right in the middle of a residential area, we'd stab a commercial property and then because of, somebody gained favor and all that type of thing. And so I think, he said, rather than try to go through and parcel all that out, he proposed mixed use, you know.
And it's our.
It's our.
So, so I want to move on from 8.3, because I think we were starting to wonder what we're gonna do with that. 8.4 is an interesting section, because it cannot be in the new plan as it is written, because it's been taken care of with the 2014 revisions that were done for zoning districts. However, what needs to be inserted in there is the current section 8.5 needs to be updated. Because that is what we need to discuss in the new plan, if we met the objectives that we set for. And then a new 8.5 would need to be created based on those right there. So I'm gonna combine these two in my discussion together, by skipping 8.4 and just going to the 8.5 section. So I just wanted to go through, we had some objectives that were put into the plan, that were gonna be, that were proposed. And so this was the section that we used when we redid our zoning regulations the next year, just for me. This is the section we used to amend, actually, we didn't amend the zoning regulations, we scrapped the old ones and went with the new ones. What we'll do, what I'm proposing we do with this plan is we, we look at the current zoning regulations and we say, this is good, this is good, this is good, this is good. This is not good, this needs change, we need more. So I wanted to go through each of these objectives, there's not a ton of them, I didn't think to discuss them. So residential, it was broken up residential industrial. So residential, it says, "Adopt regulations which promote residential infill, carefully accommodate manufactured housing and protect the historic neighborhoods." I think our current zoning regulations have done a decent job of fulfilling this objective, but I think we can do more. This is the sort of thing that's, I'll get into in magic, to the revisions. We don't have a whole lot of, our biggest problem I'm running into right now is we have a lot of lots that are too small based on our zoning regulations. So when we have a fire, which we've had several over the last several years, we put it on very, very. Where the house burned down and now they can't rebuild them a lot because it's too small. And so that's created some problems, the, what that essentially happens means is that the property owner does absolutely nothing with the property. And in fact, that includes not paying taxes on it or owing it, or doing anything. And so it just ends up in limbo, and we've had a few that actually end up going to the tax sale and nobody bet on them, because they knew that was the case. And so it's just perpetually happening. Nobody pays taxes on it, nobody maintains it, the city, the city maintains it, and we don't, I mean, obviously we owe it, but nobody pays for that. So it's a big reply. Yeah, so the only option that works, we're just giving. But we have to get hold of the property to do that. Which we, we have a land bake program that sort of helps with that. It's just a process of getting it, and obviously, what we would do is we go to the tax sale, we would bid on the property and hopefully we don't pay very much for it. And then it would get put into the land bake, then the neighbors overlay, but then approach the land bake board. We did one really recently this year, I think it was a 37-foot lot, and the adjacent owner did buy it, so that was fixed.
Why? Now that's. Who wouldn't want a bigger yard?
But they gotta understand that it's a whole. Being a whole. Because I can't sell a property to somebody that'll.
We just need to encourage the neighbors to come.
So. So we may have to look at changing, first of all, doing that, so I'll write that down.
Try to get it. So there were mutual interest, would you, then go to the, you know, north side neighbor, south side neighbor, both interested in it? Split, you could have.
You could potentially do something interesting like that. We did something similar on North, I can't remember, I can't remember which street it is. We had a stormwater pipe that cut across underneath the house and went into the C Street canal, so it's up in that neighborhood. And the stormwater pipe that collapsed and we, the city needed to go in and fix it, well, the only way to fix it was to tear the house down. So we had to buy the house, we had to tear the house down, fix the pipe. And then what happened was the property was split in half, so that's been done. But I think we probably need to do some more to deal with some of these lots, they're just a little too small. But I don't know what that looks like. We have some overland districts that help with that, but this, well, it came up at the, in fact, Ian brought it up at the last meeting where we did the order zoning deals, between the variance of that lot. That's one of the things I think we need to look at is.
Yeah, what kind of.
Yeah, is our, is our last size, minimum lot size too restricted?
The houses are getting smaller and smaller these days, tiny homes that is a big trend, or just downsides.
I would agree with that. I have a lot more cases where people want tiny ones.
Yeah.
But we could look at reducing the minimum lot size in just the general, especially for our, our R2 and our R3 districts. That aren't likely to be properly long. It's culture, that's a whole different story. So I think we have a couple ideas there. We don't need to come up with any concrete things right now, I just wanted to start that. So, okay, so the next one was adopt regulations which allow residential uses with appropriate restrictions in the central business district, but according to the approach of the current zoning regulations, well, so how the residential use is virtually everywhere. Now, in my opinion, including, in my opinion, we did this with the 2014 regulations. Basically, if you're in a non-residential zoning district, the only way you can have housing is if it's on the ground floor. And so that's the way that's worded, industrial districts for the most part don't even allow residential, which is kind of. Part of the problem with the previous zoning regulations were that there was very large slots in the city that were zoned. Don't know why, why they chose to do that. I'm guessing it was probably an old comprehensive plan that they just took the future land use map and turned it to zoning.
You might have some basic approach.
Some of us, just also, and some of that is leftover from 1964.
Part of the current regulations regarding home-based businesses.
That is in, in our supplemental regulations of zoning regulations. Basically, it allows certain home occupation. Basically, it allows certain home occupations to occur. They have to be pretty limited scope. They can't affect, they're not supposed to affect traffic.
So it's more like administrative.
Yeah, well, the idea is like, say, an attorney wants to just have an office on their. That's fine.
We have that one fellow that wanted car repairs.
Yeah, see, that, that would not fit under that.
Then we had the. What crosses, what's that street across from? For Jim C. up there.
Oh, yes, I noticed that about, yeah, I think most of you were on the plan information at that time. Where we, the lady wanted to. She called it a crafting house. And she wanted to actually have people. Do crafting projects, but they were going to do this like a long weekend thing. So they were staying the night, so they were preparing mills and so it's kind of unusual thing, it was. We really didn't, we struggled with it, the city commission struggled with it.
Do we have anything that governs Airbnb's, because there's a one now, just.
We don't have it, that's another thing, it's very similar that, we don't have anything that governs short-term models like Airbnb.
And my question is directed to growing number. Typically, mostly low market, that work out of your home, they exceed fitness to their own. And then they. Disperse the product to customers. And they're right, right, I think because of COVID. Just makes sense, I'll stay at home and work. I, being a pro-business person. Wants to do anything to jeopardize that.
And actually, that, what you're describing actually is in the zoning regulations, the home occupation things that allows that. So because in most cases, what's really happening there is nobody's coming to their house, they're not a retail store. Now, they may have like a temp rent, right? Like, that's okay, too. Those sorts of things are allowed. I'm dating myself a temp rent. That's doing this now.
So does that.
But temp rent still has. And that still exists too. But yeah, those, those sorts of businesses are allowed. The most recent one that gave me a little bit of heartburn was, if you're familiar with a lady that does the. Take and make, I forget what it's, rolling chef is what she's calling it. And there's a problem with that because people are actually coming to her house on pickup day.
Like you said, when it started coming safety issue, block trap.
Now I asked the police to investigate that. Heard anything that was actually a problem. I think that complaint came from somebody that's just. Or maybe had a similar business.
Probably couldn't get out of the driveway.
Ultimately, I told, I decided, I made the decision that it's, it's kind of a gray area, but it's within the. It triggers a different anxiety when you see a lot of stock, go crafting too.
But since short-term rentals and Airbnb, we've brought up, I don't think.
I did find out Airbnb's are supposed to prevent transient guest tax. I have no idea if that actually happens or who checks on and reinforces it, but theoretically that comes back to visiting the. Is it destined to the.
Basically, anywhere that, I think it's twenty eight days. If you have a tenant that's in a facility for less than twenty eight days, it's considered transient. So you're supposed to collect that tax. That's why hotel has to, is supposed to collect it.
I think if they use like one of the official rules like that, it probably does some of that for them, I don't know. But it's something that can provide lawsuits and all sorts of stuff.
Yeah, they kind of run it on the side on around. It's a bigger deal in a bigger city like San Francisco, I think, has had lots of problems.
Yeah, I can see it growing.
Does they have thousands of effects? City like that.
But I forget, hell, we need to govern transient guest tax sometimes, so you know, let's not pay them a little.
But I do think that that's, we need to look at maybe some regulations for short-term. And we probably should look at home occupation too. But other than that, most of that objective, I think, was met. So the next one is ensure that the regulations don't drive up the cost of housing. This goes back to a little bit about what I was talking about before with the infill building, sometimes. Our regulations can be an issue. Because, well, in that case, thinking is property law. But there's been a few cases where there was something in there and I can't think of anything specific off the top. But where there was something in the regulations that. The premise was good, but in a particular situation, it just ended up going. And some of that, well, one example was probably stormwater retention. Certainly, we need to look at stormwater, we have a whole chapter that tells about stuff like stormwater. But does a small business need attention on?
Would the, you know, for your design standards, aesthetic standards, everything. Costs the house.
Well, that's primarily for manufacturing, but yes, I agree. And at that one. We do allow the residential design manufacturing. So if somebody wants to bring in, say, double Y trailer. Into a residential district, it's okay, but it can't be a trailer. Trailer can't, has to go away, it has to become, it's going to solid foundation. And we have some standards for those that require them to be. To meet like the international residential code as opposed to the manufacturer. Now, the newer ones, even the skyline makes, most of them meet those aesthetics and goods. Anyways.
That's probably the financing form.
So that, so they wouldn't want to do it anyways, they want to set it on the foundation, they want to bring it up to the IRC code. Because of the financing situation. But we've made that, the other thing that we did in the two thousand fourteen regulations was impeach S district. Which is short for manufactured home subdivision. And. There's not a whole lot of difference between how that works, it's just that those are a little more open. To that kind of passive. That's all I have. They still have to be on permanent foundations and all that kind of stuff. In order to not be on a permanent foundation, it has to be the P district, which is what our current. Old style mobile home parks are.
Right, that's, again, goes back to. Well, we, we looked at that when we went to. For model when we were bringing in. Future B with the guy in, guy in Rod Seabird. Anticipate and experience the influx of new residents because of people coming to work there. And they actually just re, they, they just tore the whole neighborhood. Of manufactured housing there. And they went through, looked at, opened it, they had all of their driveways and corridors. I was just kind of standing.
Were they, were they still trailers in Baghdad? Okay, so they also.
Um, so what about multi, well, multifamily, well. I didn't see that you're here on this, but should we.
Yeah, that's, that's good, there really wasn't.
And before we go into multifamily, number three. In creative space, and this, because I'm watching the TV and I'm saying. I could mind me a whole lot of trouble. Mitigation is right there in front of me all the time, what can we do to prevent loss of lives, loss of property? And I would be willing to, what was said, we included in our plan, it's not already there. New homes have to have. A safe room. Preferably underground. But above ground is acceptable if it meets the standards that. The university at Lubbock did all the tests and did. So I really would, would say that would be a good thing for new housing. But. Would that unnecessarily drive up the cost of real estate?
I agree with the aspect of multifamily, well, so you don't. Because they don't own the facility, they don't have the option.
Right. I would agree with that, except. The landlords tend to be misers and don't want to put the money.
If it's required, you know, you're forced to do that.
Yeah, they're gonna be misers. Well, and it, those are required in travel or.
In the tracks.
None of ours currently happen, but it's because that phrase exists.
I, I think we should address the. Some kinds of regulations on that.
Are you talking urban complexes or probably have multiple families living in a house?
No, I'm talking about duplexes, apartment complexes. Duplexes tend to drive down. Market value of surrounding homes, which. You have a nice home, you got those duplexes, so we get. Maybe we should, should live in that aspect. I understand that also. Usually duplexes are rentals, they're not homes purchased, so that, I think that's something we should look at.
I don't have time to see this pushback, that.
If you can, there's, zoning is more of a healthcare issue, though I know we've, we know we've got situations in town with. More people living in a house, but that house is designed to accommodate. Their, their multifamily housing in like R one, R two level housing, which is creating problems, I'm sure of parking. If there's too many vehicles, I'm sure it's creating healthcare issues. I don't know how you discourage that, but you probably can't, but.
Does that fall under zoning, you think, or is that maybe on the.
It's almost like, it's almost like a Venn diagram of zoning, police and health, you know, I think.
I definitely agree.
I think we need to acknowledge that it exists in our community, because it, I mean, it is. And I don't think census captured it, because I've looked at some of the preliminary census data and. I think what we got are fam, buildings that probably house anywhere from five to ten or more people that are reporting two or three adults. And that's why our numbers are down, it's not because they didn't get to every other district in contact, it's because they did not count everyone in the homes. And it's difficult, I get it, but that's, that's something, I don't know, maybe we talk with schools and some of the social services about what they're seeing, but. I don't see that decreasing anytime soon.
What I see in those situations too is it also creates a more dangerous situation, I've noticed a lot of it. Where you're overloading the homes. Essential systems, including the heaters. For some reason, when you get, I see a lot of houses that were. Residents had carbon dioxide poisoning, this could be just a coincidence, but a lot of times. We had homes kind of overboden.
I'm sure it doesn't help with the spread of COVID, I mean, you can't quarantine in a house where you don't have your own space, so. It's got a lot of, a lot of those test protocols, so I don't want to get, I mean, I'll get so many.
Going back to rental properties lacking safe shelters. The pushback from the landlords going to be, the thing that attracted me to our city in the first place. Was the fact that we have schools that are retrofitted for home sellers, home shelters. And the schools did that, and I, I thought, hey, that's a great thing.
I was gonna point that out, I don't know if you can.
Except, it's not a good thing when you live on North Ave and you have to drive a mile or a lot further to get to one of those things. And you have people that get excited when sirens are going off and they can't drive anyway. And they get in a hurry anyway and they crash their cars getting there, which creates loss of life, loss of property. So. We have, I would really encourage new housing. Starts, be it apartments, be it single-family dwellings, I don't care, but anything new built in this town, need a safe shelter.
I think I know what you're saying, you can't just walk over to the school, get in their storm shelter, it's like.
Supposedly they activate them, but I know you've had some.
By the time the person gets there.
Especially if it's like a tornado or a tornado.
Yeah, like if it's like the Kentucky situation, you kind of want to know how to build a house, but. I would say at least, you know, I don't know if there's a way to have some flexibility, like if someone has got a building directly across from a school. Maybe we could give a waiver or something on that because there is a shelter right there, but I agree, you have to drive a mile for your parents.
A reasonable radius.
Well, yeah, you could use this permanent process, but there needs to be a reasonable radius from that school, I don't know what that would appropriately be, but. If you mapped it, you'd see gaps in the network, Combs Point's great example, and that's so far north, there's nowhere to go. And it probably should have, honestly, I mean, it's.
Based on the way it's been developed.
It's a, it's a managed property, they, you know, there's no reason they couldn't put in a few.
Well, the same thing with the apartment complex right next door, but there's not a designated storm shelter there either.
And any kind of that periphery growth, I, I do agree that we could look at, but we also have to be reasonable, you know, in our core.
That goes back to. Number. Number three, it shows only applications.
It's not just tornado, it's all the codes, I mean, we know we've got landlords that are. I mean, Mike can tell you the cases he deals with, they're, they're not adequately heating and plumbing their homes, I mean, they're on the prison issues, not just.
I think we should address those. And you have a family and. You have a family living in a house in Lakeville, Kentucky, who has a dead child out. They put the child in the car seat and they put helmets on. And tornado came and rolled their house into the neighbor's house and the child survived that. But had a stroke and was lifelighted and died at the hospital. So would a safe shelter mitigate that, I can almost guarantee it, if it was underground, that child would still be alive.
I will think about the underground shelters.
They flood.
What was the FEMA shelters now are on the ground? So in Oklahoma, there was a school that had an underground shelter. And you know what I'm talking about, the kids were down there and they had forty two kids drowning.
But you're, you're saying at a minimum, like the concrete internal safe room.
Yeah, yeah.
And those are becoming more.
It could even be a, say, my neighbor go together. It could be big enough for me and my wife and Charles, if you and your wife want to come over and get it, then we. We're going to be neighbors, share it.
Yeah, they're usually multi-purpose, my sister built a house exactly, and it's, it's her closet and after marriage.
Yep, that's, that's, it would be above ground shelters.
And I think it could be done at a fairly low cost.
Yeah, they're, they're.
If they can survive, I've seen pictures of above ground that survived. Three at least, at four and at five. And nothing was left on the ground on the basis of that above ground shelter.
I did see they don't want to come.
No, they're just.
On the building, it's still there. And I'm, oh, we're not really connected, but they're easier for me to get into that. Anyway, new houses, okay, wow, new houses, maybe you see that?
Okay, and these last two are kind of similar. One is for senior citizens and one is to encourage affordable housing, and what we did in fourteen was. And what we did in 14 was create overlay districts. And the way those districts were supposed to work was that if you were developing something that hit either one of those and that you got relief from the setback implications, then that's where it's at. Now it didn't get used, we today have no elderly housing in overlay districts. And we only have one housing opportunity overlay districts for the affordable, and that was Compass Point, and it's not being used originally intended.
What was the original intended use?
Well, they designed that, that subdivision with undersized lots. Because what they were thinking was originally was they were going to be able to build these smaller houses, they used on small lots, so that they could sell them for the moderate income level, like, I don't know, probably the 125, 130, 140 range somewhere in there. And they didn't think they could do that with larger lots. But they did get a moderate income housing grant that helped finance some of that. When, when Brennan Jellians came in, changed what was being done there. Now, it still arguably falls into that range because the grant's there and they have to track their rent. They have to keep it at that higher levels for, so they still, that's, that didn't go away because the grant is. But the, the district didn't do anything because it's all rental property. So it doesn't affect the, the housing.
Let's go back to the data war for just a second, marry two ideas together. Where you're talking about the issue of small lot sizes, where properties are removed, whether intentionally or by things like Meyer. Why wouldn't we think along the lines, instead of splitting that between the two neighbors, using those for a location to build a safe space in the neighborhood? You know, 37-foot wide lots, plenty of space to build a shelter.
And FEMA is real good, good grants on, on shelters. Yeah, what I understand, I've done a lot of school projects, and all those projects wouldn't have been accomplished without funding. So they have dual purpose rooms. It's a storm shelter, but it's also four or five classrooms as well. That's all funded.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's. We actually talked about if we ever redid the Hogan, going for one of those, because I don't know if Mills School says anything FEMA related, but there's, that's one of those galleries, yes, in the neighborhood. I think it's something, at least if not housing construction, maybe it needs to be a goal at city construction. To be honest, this facility probably doesn't really, I think there's sections of it that are pretty resistant, but.
That, yeah.
Pretty good. I would go, I'd go in the little hallway, right? You know, but, you know, putting that in there so that if we get to the point where we do replace the Hogan, we don't just put up a wooden building, let's do something that will actually serve the neighborhood in multiple capacities as well as meeting spaces, say, you know, our first community center, if we were adding on to it. That would address some of those pocket areas, even if we can't get the housing up to speed. That, that is what you can put in there, because that's no different than telling somebody to fix the ADA and the other stuff. It needs, it's gotta be broken down or it isn't coming back down.
Maybe it has a mitigation, right, somewhere in here, the flood plain management. Who's the flood plain manager?
Oh, that's going through a flux, but it's basically going to end up being me for regulating soon.
He was my cringe sweet steaks on that one.
And my, my mention of that is that in the last five years, easy, the flood plain match has all changed, and people are upset. And you get it against the other sentence. Aren't there some ways if we can mitigate flooding? We've already had a history of flooding here, because mine laws got flooded. So.
We're looking into a new program that FEMA offers called the Community Rating System.
Yes.
And as part of that, the more that we do as a city, the more the discount people that have to have flood insurance get to you.
Right.
And so that's, we may be looking to do some stuff where we can mitigate some of that flooding. And that'll probably go with residential. There are certain things that we can do. And then, of course, we also, as part of that, would strengthen what's required. Like, say, for example, a home does get flooded and it's damaged, what's required of them to. Right. So do they have to bring it up to the full flood standard? Probably, yeah, it's like, so maybe you have to elevate it, or maybe you have to change the flood proof or something.
Or the city could get a grant to buy out, reenter into a park, we need another park.
I think we kind of beat the residential section to the whole sense. So let's move on to industrial. You made a comment on this, but it just says identify the appropriate amount of property which should be classified as industrial. And make sure that industrial is appropriate. For the most part, with the exception of perhaps Canback. I think that this city over time has actually done a really good job of that. The industrial areas are kind of appropriate, where they don't bother the residential as much, with the exception of Canback. And, but like Cree Stone is up in an area where they can do a lot of stuff that doesn't.
If I didn't smell, my cities.
Yeah.
Do a, my city smell.
Fortunately, Cree Stone doesn't even really happen as you think.
So I'm not fighting, just Cree Stone, but there, I came from a roundabout way. And it had the largest mall, the largest industrial park in the state of Oklahoma. And if you got down there in the city, it was stunning. But if you got down closer to the city, to the plants, they stuck. People didn't live there for a reason.
So there's a few towns, I won't name the names right now, but there are a few towns in Kansas that you know you're at the town before you're fit to. Yeah. It's everything.
I think industrial zoning has worked out badly well so far.
Basically, we want to maintain what we're already.
And make sure that we, to do this, what are the rules in place that allows the city to mitigate inappropriate placing of industrial.
Probably for the most part is the future than a used map. Which is, which is part of what we're working on, so we have to make sure that we don't put any of that purple in the middle of the residential. So it's, it's not complicated, we just gotta maintain the status quo.
But even when you look at future growth, I'll pretend that we're going to grow a bit of rate faster than Winfield in the direction of Winfield. And there are already some buildings in that growth area that potentially could be, it has its materials site. Well, we knew about that. And it'd be in our plan.
I need a board.
Yeah, no, honestly, yeah, that's why we, we put her on the board, because she lives in that area.
Yeah.
Uh, so we'll have, hopefully, we'll get everyone doing that part of the plan.
Industrial is, I'm like, housing is a case by case, doesn't come. For now, since we work.
Well, and the, well, industrial park has room for expansion too.
Right, and that would be the advantage of having an established industrial park in place. So that when I come to our city and want to set up my, my job as a veteran to support the economy, you're only going to decide about that until you figure out what I'm making money out of. So you need to do due diligence, encourage your businesses to come, but give them a place to come to.
Yeah, functionally, uh, we learn some things the hard way. And as the last man standing in a community south of us, in the state of Oklahoma, last man standing, where there were a slate of refineries, they had the, they had the groundwater problem. And part of the remediation of that was what is the same thing that happened, I could talk about this better. In Coffeyville, the refinery there, where they had the gross flooding a few years ago also. What most industrial sites are doing, they have learned that it's better to spend money and create green space. You know, between a fence line and a residential area, where if they have an environmental problem, then it doesn't immediately impact residents. So then many of them are starting, which we don't have, we don't have that kind of space, but many of them are starting to use a half mile to a mile radius from, you know, from their fence line. They say we'd rather own this property in mode of keeping, looking plant trees, keep it looking nice, than have people build a house two blocks away. We have a release and they're having to pay because they got ash and smoke.
But we can mitigate some of that a little bit by not allowing our residential group, like say, we're acting. We don't allow that to get more dense. Now, the problem with that is, is that we want people to be able to live close to where they work. So you gotta kind of balance that, but it's probably going to be more like, well, the family, it's going to end up being okay with these folks.
So you can get that kind of density population on place by having more families, uh, as opposed to having, you know, just residential houses, one family per house, you know, but you just, and so what you have, you're saying that you don't want to do is you don't want to move. You really don't want to build residential across the street, you know, stay here.
We, we don't want a forest glen right next door to the Cree Stone, that's not going to work.
Right. So you can see more of a thing like merging between wherever the property line is for the school district and their high school building. That green space back there might be what's developed and moving away from the industrial side. And we're spoiled, you know, we've been, we've been close to working two minutes as opposed to, you know, coffee work, which is tough.
Yeah.
Too many drives, very close.
You do not, we didn't take 20 minutes to get there anyway.
Yeah, I definitely think in this new con, comprehensive plan, we need to distinguish between, like you said, the industrial areas, but as well multi-family, well, areas, key, significant family homes, a certain area. Like I said, the reason is, want to maintain those market values and new scene, family home areas.
Totally, play more taxes.
You what? Yeah. Well, like, um, like I said earlier, if you build, if you have a nice beautiful home, somebody builds a duplex next to it, that's kind of devalued cost your home, so instead of building a duplex there, say, well, you want to build a duplex, you can build it over here, this area, it's not affecting the value.
But the interesting thing about this whole argument is it's happening all over the country. There is a city, or it's not a city, it's a community that's a huge chunk of Atlanta, Georgia, that's upset with the city of Atlanta because they are trying to do the exact opposite of what you're succeeding. They're trying to make it to where there's more flexible housing options, especially in transit, which actually does have a sense. And so they are threatening to create their own city, so force themselves to be D N X for the city area. And create a new city so that they can do what they want. And it's because of that very top level, it's closed, that's fine.
I mean, a bigger city is a bigger deal. It can be very frustrating, spend a lot of money, like, how else can you profit? Somebody comes in, some apartment complex next to you, also it creates a whole slew of problems, you know. So I can understand why they're upset, definitely.
But just to warn you, there is stuff even at the federal level that's trying to work its way to force things in cities to be more, so it's, it's, it's out there. I told states, though, like Oregon and California, actually change the R A force to do certain things like that. Well, then we should probably address that. And some of that will happen, they'll come with that.
We could do an adaptation of a sign that's in Oregon, to put Kansas in. It was, there's, there's, so we do an adaptation of a sign that's in Oregon, state line. They, that signage says, don't Californicate. We hit one that said, don't Californicate Kansas.
Okay, well, let's move on to commercial. So the first one here says, adopt regulations that adequately accommodate large-scale commercial developments. And I made a note that we should consider allowing, this is a controversial one, but consider allowing low-end industrial uses to flex into, suplex it. And what I'm suggesting there, like Winfield, for example, just opened a brewery, a small craft brewery. Our regulations don't really, not a way to do, I had to check, I don't know what they did to make it work, but I'm talking about stuff like that. Another thing that's come up is Amazon likes to do this 48-hour delivery, or actually less than that. And in order to do that, what they're doing is they're buying up these facilities where the, they're basically just warehouses. And what happens is the only people that go to those warehouses are the Amazon delivery vans. And they, they go to pick them up, that's, that's the ones that deliver to your house. Well, more and more what's happening is because of our retail stores kind of closing up shop, is that they're turning into these mini warehouses.
Like they would take a section of a shopping center and say, for example, the old portions building, turn it to their house. Yeah, so I see what you're, I see what you're saying, but a brewery would be well accepted.
But right now, that would take special, a special approval process. And so my proposal would be to kind of open up our commercial, our list of commercial uses that are allowed. And allow it, obviously, they need to have some standards. Obviously, a brewery has to not be able to be within 200 feet of a school or whatever, those kinds of standards to have in place. But in a way, that's already there for alcohol-related businesses, there already is that requirement, they have to be separated.
Using property from here in Winfield, and having a location that you could do a brewery and a number of other small businesses to foster, it's a stepping stones for them to set their brewery there. But they're going to outgrow that at some point, so helping to get to the point where they outgrow it, and then somebody else help that.
Like a business incubator.
Well, the craft brew, breweries are real popular, you know, they're, they're, they're also restaurants that serve food, it's kind of a family.
That's the weird thing about it, they're kind of an unusual mixing of two different uses.
Yeah, I didn't think those fall under the industrial category, because it's an industrial process, a refining process. Yeah, I didn't think those fall under the industrial category, because it's an industrial process, a refining process.
And it can produce precious gems and stuff like that, toxic byproducts. So you have to be careful where you put.
When I moved up here, I was intrigued by the number of wineries. We have wineries in Oklahoma, but I saw a bunch of them up here much more than I had in my county. Climate works for that here a little bit more than, than drought, but.
So basically, my proposals would be more flexible. So the next one is adopt regulations which help maintain the downtown as the principal retail and office center, and promote commercial redevelopment downtown, also protecting the historic features and character of structures in the downtown area. Well, we are actually in the middle of a process that's supposed to help that. Uh, if you've ever heard of the Main Street Association, we are actively trying to develop our city Main Street Association. In fact, it, it already exists, as far as the state is concerned, it's a, it's a corporation. Uh, we just have to get through the process of, uh, actually becoming a designated community. There's a long application process that's currently involved. I'm on the committee that's kind of helping with that. But they look at all of those things that I just talked about. They're, they're looking to promote the redevelopment and in the downtown area, it's worth that area to be. So we're trying to get people to, to develop their businesses in the downtown area. At the same time, the downtown area is also a good chunk of the area that we're looking at is part of the historic district. So the Main Street organization can also help with that. Developing the guidelines, helping to educate, uh, the building owners that are in the historic district that have to deal with those regulations, what it takes to get through the process, um, what incentives there are out there, like the historic tax credits. Uh, a new one that the city is also working on in the downtown area is the RHID. And what that does is any of the floors that are not ground floor, the upper floors, can be used for residential, and ours don't even, regulations actually allow that anyways. Um, but what, what way that program works, it works if you've ever were, heard of a TIF, something like that. Um, when they do, when they fix up the upper floors, the tax value should increase. And so what, what'll happen in RHID is the, the increased tax increment that comes from that development will be put into a fund. And as that fund goes up, the property owners that would like to develop their sand stories and to have them can draw off of that fund to help them finance their projects. So it's kind of, it's a brand-new thing at this day, it's, we've never done before. Typically, the way the RHID works is for new subdivisions. And so the increase in the value there go pay for infrastructure. So that, that's how we're saying, well, in the downtown area, there's our infrastructure, we don't do anything. But we need to do stuff like bring it up to the fire code. It might be that they have to sprinkle the building, they have, or they might have to put in an alarm system. Uh, they also have to figure out a way to deal with ABA, um, if they're going to do that. So this is what that program would help to fund those costs.
And on the other side of that, I shone a corner, and I really do support Main Street, that I know buildings about, too many miles from here that are vacant, unoccupied. Main Street, recable concrete, that the city isn't excited about doing anything to support Main Street rehabbing the buildings. That's heartburn and heartache in all the same time.
Right now, the city administration, including the city commission, is one percent behind this project.
Yeah, it's just, um. I don't know if anybody's seen the Schmidt Building there, Schmidt George Building, but there's definitely some structural issues. Not as buildings to say the least.
Well, that one is, fortunately, it's not a direct, um, structural issue. What happened in that building was.
It was a veneer.
Yeah, it's just a veneer, lightning hit the veneer of the building and caused some of it to loosen up. And over the years since that lightning strike hit, it got worse and worse and worse, until it finally did what it did. The, we yourself, well, we're a huge true.
And I'm happy to see businesses coming back to Main Street, the Chinese restaurant thing, the newest one.
Yeah, and, you know, the perfect, this, uh, I thought that was a pretty awesome project. Bringing that business back and the people back to, I mean, in my opinion, that is one of the highlights of this town. City did a great job on sidewalks, light poles, and so. If we could figure out a way to, uh, reduce the cost, I think it becomes more of a building code issue maybe. Well, if somebody wants to identify safety, but that needs to be addressed because, especially the fire codes, sprinkling or a number of stock a lot of investors from investing in that area. So we, but I will say this, the fire codes have changed, become a lot more leaning. New building materials that are not available for my notes, flames, focus spreads a lot, a lot more efficient or less of a problem than it was on some of the old materials.
And that's part of what we've, what we've started doing in the city is we've adopted the existing building code. And one of the things that it allows us to do that we actually are actively putting in place on the development that's going in, is instead of having the sprinkle, they have, they can use the alarm fire breaks and, and they can do something else too. But basically, they, they start to have the separation, like the two-hour separation, or whatever, which means four seconds, things start to happen. But they can do, instead of the sprinkler, they can do the alarm system. Has to be centralized, so it's still not cheap, it's a lot cheaper than.
Well, we move forward on that, we should get some opinions from tradesboard, most guys aren't, aren't saying. The code book is, we're allowed to make changes as a city, you know, we just use that as a guideline, so. And we can make some modifications to help businesses or, uh, investors come and buy up some of its buildings, the financial of it, so.
Yeah, I think all those things are good things, it's just, just, it's finding that balance between life-saving.
Yeah, definitely.
And affordability.
Yeah, definitely.
So the, 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 we all play the lottery, and we all want all these problems to be solved.
My coworker who's leaving us in a few, we've, says that all the time, if he, if he won the lottery, he fix this, 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 this. Whatever, like.
Yeah, the, 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 frankly, he had to buy a ticket to do this.
I haven't heard that Amazon is. This area is possible.
And we got land between here and one building.
You just fill one north of each stall.
Just as long as they build them better than they want, they have it.
They have to take storm shelter.
But if it's in the plan, that new buildings have to have a safer.
Well, I don't know about lottery, but as this infrastructure money starts to flow down, it's gonna be real healthy. Most of the plan updated, especially on infrastructure, transportation, housing. We kind of have very, I should have drawn it out, I'll have it put in your packet, but just kind of broad overview of what they're thinking. Kansas, see, there's a lot, it's gonna be a year in order for we kind of have a full rest for the whole thing, but. Uh, KNO will get rolled real quick with the money they're gonna get. Just one, one thing kind of ties in residential, just want to say stuff is the drinking water, the lead pipe, the basement program. As I understand, that's a program the city kind of is gonna have to administer a little bit, but it, you know, we're not really responsible for fixing it because that's private property. I don't know what that's gonna look like, but that's probably something we need to keep in our minds in the planning.
Well, we do have the, what, what the water department calls goose necks though, and some of those are like, between, that happens between the meter, those we can do something about.
We have to, the goal is to get all the water service back to our picture and how that is getting done, but I, you know, how was that gonna work, K E H E, all that, we just don't know yet, but I think it is something that the city will have to take a lead in. Even if it's just connecting residence to, uh, the grants are built or whatever. Just keep that in mind.
Okay, and the last objective that was in the plan before, this one, we were just talking about earlier. It talks about creating a mixed-use classification where commercial development can occur alongside residential. And my note was pretty critical of that, because as we were talking about, um, earlier, this has not worked well along that Summit Street corridor. Uh, so what I propose is scaling that thing back. And maybe even instead of having a mixed-use district, to create, uh, like overlay districts instead, or go along with it. The problem is that corridor between Linden wasn't the right, quite the main street. I think it was a little bit, it was more like Pine. That section between Pine and Kansas is an absolute mess. And it has been for about fifty years. Because I was looking back in the seventies, uh, when Hardee's was moving in, where Hardee's is today, and they were having the same discussions in like nineteen seventy-one, we had with Family Dollar, and we continue to have with a certain resident that lives in that neighborhood. Uh, it, it hasn't improved, we haven't done really anything in that area to, uh, deal with that. One of the proposals that, that have been brought up, and I don't know if this is even feasible, would be to require any commercial development to have a wall of separation between the residential area and the, uh, commercial use. Today, we already have the requirement for screening, so like private defense has to be alongside that, but we haven't gone so far as to require a wall. In the case of our controversial Family Dollar site, they actually did build a wall. And it wasn't with any pressure, it was, it was their choice, they, they wanted that. They already had started hearing from some of the neighbors that, that they really wanted enhanced screening mechanism, whatever you wanna call it. But the other problem is, in the case of First Street, it's, it's very narrow. It, it's not like a lot of our other side streets, uh, like I live on B Street. It's probably twice as wide in my neighborhood as what First Street is. And so it can't handle traffic, uh, that comes through.
And parking.
And, there's, it's a disaster. I don't know why, uh, that corridor was developed the way it was, but the fact of the matter is, it, it's already there. We, we can't move First Street, that's not going to work, we can't widen First Street, that's not gonna work. And we don't really want to displace the residents in that neighborhood, that's not really helpful either.
Yeah, you're working about twenty-five feet. Just an hour long. How much wider than this room?
But what I'm saying is, we, we've got to do something different than what we've been doing because.
So we probably maybe need to have like distinct boundaries, you know, in commercial, so just try to, mixed use, you know, you know, whatever, how much you want.
And there, it's kind of in there, and depending on what, maybe with the recommendation of the plan, I think we can open up the zoning regulations and just look at exactly what's in the district. And make some adjustments to it.
And I hear from there, that, that street, First Street, will be just as narrow, and you'll have a house for them, and you'll have a problem to mitigate.
Yeah, because most of those lots are too small, that's right, because they may be wide enough, but they're not big enough, right?
So let me ask you this, do you ever have any, any, uh, residents on Summit Street, those areas, if you've ever inputted feedback from them, like, they don't like living on Summit Street, or maybe they do, you don't know the business, so what, what's the review been about?
We did a little bit of that, um, and again, it was around Family Dollar. And this is actually a different person than who are, trying to say. Uh, but there was, there was a property owner across the street from Family Dollar when we did some sign variances. That was really concerned that, he was concerned that the, that the sign would be too bright, shining this ramp, you know, cute, but. Well, for the most part, that really didn't happen, because the, the lighting from the parking lot is brighter than the sign. So that, that really was, but at the same time, the parking lot is also really great.
Well, I, I just, uh, I mean, we, we got Brahms and, and, you know, Arvins there in Dollar General. So, so your Main Street property values potentially are not gonna be as valuable as they would be commercially.
Yes, that's definitely true with that.
And you see.
We should take that into consideration on, on these regulations.
And you see some cities, particularly in the northeast, that let off commercial development in residential areas, just let the resident sell their house to, uh, you know, a, a selling shop or a beauty salon or something. The beauty salon lights the objects of the place, and they get foot traffic that way.
So it could be, nobody likes to hear this phrase, but designing standards may fix some of this. So you know, you can, you can have a restaurant that it needs to be, and it doesn't need house, but it needs to look like it's a house. That's just an example.
Yeah.
Stevie Joe was a good example of that.
Or it can be a house. Your grandfather did, it was a commercial, so we can go on future, hold on to this area, so to, to a business style. That's a, that's a tough, tough situation.
It is, it is, it is tough. I think, again, looking at the spirit, the intent of that was to not be so restricted that we couldn't facilitate. You know, in both in any area, whether it was housing or commercial or industrial, we did all of this. Uh, but the caveat to that was that we weren't supposed to be, you know, overly, overly excited when somebody came along, so, you know, it might be, but it might not be the right fit, you know? And so if it's not the right fit, the, the, the onus is on, on the bottom to say, great idea, but it's not the right fit, as opposed to saying, any business, any new business is a good business, let's just take them in, we'll make exceptions, and people around them will have to critique the team.
Yeah.
And, and just bear it, title thing, and, you know, so there, there was a little bit of, that we, we needed to have the discerning disposition that said, it's not the right fit, and we, you know, and so you, you look at that whole, and you look at that, you talk about that area, not the First Street, we're talking about the twenty, but look at the whole construct of that, because then you, you, you have a street that, that empties north to where if you would enforce the.
to where if you would enforce the traffic code, the only thing you could do from First Street legally would be to drive to the corner of Kansas Avenue, make a right turn in the nearest lane, the right lane, which is a right turn lane, and then go back south, and then maybe go to Second Street and come around and go, you know, arguably, you could go, you could go across the street and make a left turn and go west to go continue north, but I'm just saying. So functionally, you look at that area and it is not conducive to commercial traffic. First Street, Second Street, on the south side of Kansas Avenue or on the north side of Kansas Avenue.
So we would restrict access on First Street and eliminate the problem that we have.
There it is. The problem like with Family Dollar, for example.
Family Dollar.
Is that they needed to, they needed an extra access point for service poles. And so they wanted that, and then even the fire department kind of wanted that because of what it was. And that's why, I thought you were going there with what we were saying about the fire. Because if you think about the car park on First Street and a structured fire on First Street, it creates a difficulty for our emergency response folks to get in there and maneuver.
And maintaining a commercial businesses along that area. At Kansas and Summit, I'm surprised really that this office there exists.
See, I don't know how you get in and out of it. The line and walk.
If you look at the way Brahms has set up, it does not interfere with First Street.
Now, they had the best day in First.
Type of businesses. To me, Dollar General is not fit there, it's just, you know, the partners, the whole address and stuff, just, you know.
It's like you said. Yeah, and if you think back, that was, that was a, a house that was a business. Had the little costume outfit thing there.
Tuxedo shop.
Yeah, yeah, and, and so they considered that, you know, already something commercial there.
That was a tuxedo.
You know, but we, I mean, I'm just saying, so the conversation was, hey, they wanna come in and build a dollar store, and we need a store, you know, that'd be good for the, and all of that. And so you just get excited about it and you say, sure, but it really isn't, wasn't the right. That, that, that part of it is, so we need to figure out a way to probably make it more restrictive.
Yeah.
Go ahead and maybe maintain even that district, but it needs to be more restrictive. Including, like no access to First Street. Just write it in.
Square footage restrictions possibly. You have large square footage building, completely, you know, or require more parking. So that's a good way to minimize, you know, square footage is a good way to restricts on businesses.
It's okay to say no sometimes.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it was a good discussion. So this next little section, we're still on the same eight point five. It doesn't actually apply anymore because we adopted this already. So maybe that won't even be in there. And part of the reason that was even in there is because we weren't just simply modifying our existing regulations, we were writing brand-new regulations. And that's, that's why that ended up being put in there. So all of it was done, I mean, we reshape, redefine, simplify the zoning regulations. The residential districts were absolutely insane and we combined those, that's a big three. And then it talks about the new districts and stuff. New regulations limit the board design authority. Oh, they were, the B Z A had been doing some interesting things, like they were a little outside the scope of what they were supposed to be doing, and it was just going to be written into the regulations. They were, they were doing like special, special use cases. And really, that's supposed to be this body doing that, the conditional use process. And so that was totally removed. Well, I say they, that's kinda funny because it's you guys. But that actually sort of came from that, from this change too. It's just kind of simplified that process a little bit. And we passed them, we received a lot of pushback when we did that because it was like, one board is going to be telling the other board what to do, but really thinking, oh, that's not how these boards work. The, like for instance, the board of zoning appeals cannot stop a rezon, they can't make a decision on a rezon, it's just not in their curriculum, it doesn't even happen. And by the same token, you don't appeal a decision, say, out of a rezon to the board of zoning appeals, they don't do that. You appeal a decision to the city branch. So those are two different things. Now, this particular section, we're talking about this. We did get rid of the special use, we just put it under there, so now the B Z A just handles exceptions. Only exceptions where the citizens are allowed to do that. Issue of the variance is, it looks like uses for stuff that we've done the past few years or so. So we're talking about setbacks, we're talking about building law signs. We're talking about, when it comes to signs, what's allowed for signs, changing the, what's allowed it, just those things. So I heard it written, in fact, I think Jim Calvert-Gutierrez said it, because in an ideal world, the board of zoning appeals would never need, there would never be a need for them to be, because the zoning regulations are so perfect. Yeah, so we tried to write the regulations so that there isn't a need for them to meet. But as we've seen over and over again, there's, there's no way to, to write it. So you have to have that and stay on, regardless of the type of zoning appeals anyways. But the idea is we wanna change as much as we can in the regulations so that that works.
Well, I think everyone deserves to have their case or their fact that they want.
And part of what they also do, and I'm not gonna do this since I've been in this role, but part of the job of that board, and the reason it's called the zoning appeals board, is because it's supposed to appeal my decision as a zoning manager. So, but that just goes back to interpretation of the code. It's not, I don't agree with the code, it's, it's not clear with how you turn. Now, again, we have to do that. I've had some people that threaten to violate, deal with like that, but we can follow it. They don't, they don't want to be elevated to.
Yeah.
And they don't wanna wait thirty days that it's gonna take to just get to the next board. So anyway, that was done. And that whole section, these, these things were completed, so we don't even need that section. The next section is kind of the same thing, it was talking about what, what should be proposed for the new regulations. Now, I think that we probably need this section in here, it's gonna be rewritten based on what we partially was, I'm talking about today. Because what this section is for is to guide us into how to change the stuff. So all the stuff we've been talking about, all this meeting, needs to go into this section so that we know our success. And the thing about how we did it here is, we've got the approval of the city commission too. Because if they adopt the comprehensive plan that's in it, that means that they're gonna be pretty open to the changes that we bring six months later in the zoning commission. So it's just one more step in the process and one more way to make sure policies that want to be implemented are actually implemented. So there's not all we can talk about in this section today because we need to develop what we're talking about today. So we're gonna, I'm gonna need to go back, take all the stuff we talked about, create the new draft, just like all the other chapters, and bring it back to you, see if we can put it in this section. But that section, it talked about all the different things. Again, some of them we've not gotten the greatest with, like it says elderly housing overlay district habit use. We, we have some great regulations for manufactured home parks, but we haven't had any new parks come in to implement it. And I really don't have the power. That's a bad thing. Not work very, it's been a disaster. And I made some notes through all of these, but I don't wanna go through them all right now. We've talked about several of them, like the mixed-use district, I know I'm gonna need clarity. Got a little clarity, I'm wanting to see, and now I just need to take it to the next level and put that in words. Eight point six was the, we, the survey that we did in two thousand thirteen. We haven't really done a survey that had anything to do with land use, and it's probably something we're gonna have to do at some point. These questions that are in here talk more about growth management than anything else. So we had talked about, should the city be concerned with annexation? Should we be trying to annex more than? And surprisingly to me, forty-six percent of respondents said yes. That, that was a good thing. But the problem is, it was so skewed because there wasn't enough responses to it, that it's not mandatory. The next question was a little bit better response. It's asking how to deal with, with this, should, should it be annexation? Should it be getting the county to adopt zoning? Should it be zoning in a three-mile area? Well, if you remember, the whole zoning in a three-mile area did not go very well at the last round of this. In fact, our public hearing for the comprehensive plan focused almost entirely on that issue. And it kind of missed out on some of the other topics, because it's just what you want, it was a civil war between the I F L, primarily, and the city. So, the county, interestingly enough, and Saturday's newspaper, there was an article about a case where a property owner was complaining about another property in the county. It was a nuisance case where they thought that the owner had too much junk on their property or something. Well, the county investigated it and determined that there wasn't a public health issue there. And so they basically said, we can't do it. And part of the problem is, the county cannot enforce the code the same way the city can. So the county can go in and clean up a property and bill it to the property, it just, they don't have the authority like the city does. In fact, they tried that and actually followed through with it and they were sued. And it went all the way to the Supreme Court, well, state Supreme Court, Kansas Supreme Court, yeah, not the, not the federal. And ultimately, it was reversed and the county was forced to pay the back for everything. And it was not pleasant then. But the way to get around that is for the county to adopt zoning. County's not interested in that. So having that in our plan to encourage them to adopt zoning is probably a place to learn how. Because it's probably not.
Well, what, what is the reason for pushback on that?
Basically, the county residents are saying, we moved out to the county because we didn't like the zoning restrictions as we said at the city. We moved out to the county and now the county wants to tell us what to do, now we're just taken off.
It's always like, I shouldn't just turn her away.
But it's interesting, because in some counties.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna.
They don't do that.
My opinion is, you can't, can't. Wanna live in the city or close to the subject, the city flaws. Don't want to live in it, you know, about the county law, you know, outside of this. Because you know, the cities are gonna throw eventually. Annex to the end of the zones. I just don't think we should stop progress because of a few people, I think, concerned with the community as a whole, so. That benefits the community to annex those areas and just a few people don't like it.
The one thing that we do need to do and be way more careful about, and we were, say, back in two thousand and three, is that if we are going to annex an area, that we make sure they understand what benefits they're gonna receive, and then we actually have a method for them to receive them. Otherwise, we're going to end up with Parkerville, Parker Two.
Yes, but that is, I agree, so that's a good lesson learned there, so.
Learn from your mistakes right now. And that community, if you were to go and ask some of the residents at the time, part of the reason that they didn't wanna be annexed was, they, all they saw was higher taxes. And nothing in return for those higher taxes. And quite frankly, if you really look at the city's planning, they weren't going to get anything. They, they were going to be annexed in the city, their taxes were gonna go up, and they weren't gonna get it.
They froze their, their, their jobs. We have to offer something. Well, we still, no, they still, I mean, they still get emergency services, they don't say, we're not coming outside the city intention.
Yes, but they are taxed, they're taxed for this.
Right. So they give us that, they give us that.
Things like flood protection, other systems, infrastructure systems, that is not prepared to help, you know, and support. That's, I kind of keep listening to, to, but my, my thoughts are, I think I've said this once before in meetings, is, is it really, I'm kind of hammed on in where we grow because of the same conversation, because county does not welcome us. And we're really, we're really copped into northward growth.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, and so if we, so if we, if we take the same heavy hand that they did with the proposed annexation there, we're gonna, there's nothing you can do to stop us, you'll find out that people.
The rivers create those boundaries.
You got Angeland on the other side of there, over here.
So I think you're right, we're definitely pushing north.
Well, I think this highlights the need to focus on all the other issues. There's been, for my time, I think there was always this mentality of, well, we can just grow and expand and annex and so on. Obviously, that strategy did not work out so very nicely. We need to redevelop what we already have in the city, we need to improve the infrastructure, we need to do the infotasking, we need to bring in a business and industry in the right places in a creative way and not just grow our footprint, because what that's also doing is growing our infrastructure burden.
That's right.
And, and honestly, we're at, I think we're at close to a breaking point realistically. Just adding more subdivisions is just gonna make it worse. And so, I mean, you can't just plan this all for it. I mean, you're still gonna need to look at the annexation growth, certainly, but. But when you got a sixty-year-old water transmission problem, that you're still trying to find the funds to.
Yeah, I agree.
Get that, with this, what we call it, infrastructure plan coming from D C.
We're still trying to renew the water line to Christmas so they can have fire protection.
I think you're right, how can we, streets are big money. Pay for new stuff, you can't afford what we got.
And functionally, function.
And, and functionally, functionally, what you, the, you know, I think the goose that laid the golden egg is to displace a lot of inferior quality housing in the city, and replace it with a quality housing. So that you're actually getting something from your mill, that you get houses on these land properties instead of us sitting there and doing nothing. Now, so, so, so we, if we have big, we have a lot of space in town where we can.
I agree, there's already infrastructure there.
Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to do new streets.
Yeah, it's not going to cost us anything.
So, so looking inward and saying, what, 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 what can we do in these areas here to further develop them?
It's like, it's like they have a old house, it's broke down, like, oh, I want to put a new addition on it, you know?
And everybody moved to the new addition, then nobody wants to live in the old, the crepe that I said. Then you still are watching the old, what's, what's the old doing?
Exactly.
It's just continuing.
You mentioned annex, and the benefits to those people, what, what are the benefits? Like, one, one thing that came to my mind when you mentioned that was, I am out there in the Crestwood area, and people are always shocked when I say I just had my septic tank.
You should have worked on it.
What? Typically, you should have, I'm in this, I'm in the city limits, and I have a septic tank, I didn't know that was possible, that's what I had. So the city's actually lucky that the Crestwood residents didn't rebel, like the Allen Parkerville residents rebelled back in the eighties or whatever it was, that, that was annexed. Yeah, Crestwood, I think it was in the eighties.
Yeah, adequate water, decent streets, those are, I mean, we're probably getting some of that, you know, we've done the bridge.
Yeah.
Got the other bridge scheduled, we've got the riverbed water line ready to go as soon as we get the pump station done, that should help, that's the other one on the Crestwood.
But sewer is a whole other beast, I mean, now, at least there's a force bringing up there, country, states, I guess theoretically someday might both come down.
Maybe.
Then how do you connect the rest, I mean, it would be August, other day.
I think you would need another pump station.
Yeah, and there's no appetite, sure, for special assessments, if that, you'd probably think, hey, we got annexes for bear higher taxes and shit. And typically, for this, I know, the same deal, you know, they had sewer backflow problems, they had mass fringe problems. And I property values, and it's like, this doesn't combine, I totally don't buy in Parkville before they did, I really don't. So, you know, we need to do it, or get all the delivery going on too, and and I think we're finally getting there, it's just, you gotta wait twenty, thirty years, but.
Well, you know, and, and get whacked over there with the state one time, you know, with the same, yeah, for sure. I think, I think Parkerville was a learning, it was a costly one, because it does land blocks.
It doesn't just land blocks, it, it construres both communities' ability to do anything in between or in the growth areas, based on what you're already.
Well, unless we could ever, if we could ever get them to agree to a joint planning commission, then we could have, but it ain't actually called my birthday, he's an airhead, I'll say that right now.
Well, and honestly, the county commission really did not do the due diligence they were supposed to do on this, because if they had, Parkerville would not exist. Because there is a provision in the state statute that says the city cannot hinder the growth of. Now, they could have kept us from it, but they, they, they definitely would have had that. But the easiest way, and I totally understand why they did it, was with things, the easiest way for men, for, ever for being, and it's about others that use it.
Or creation.
Which is what they did, so they, they did that, their work was right.
I don't, I don't know if this falls under lane, you said you think we need to put something on there about trying to do revolutions in Parkerville too, that eventually, I believe, there's already a a council, a lot of them are younger people, Cody's age, that have moved out there, they don't care, they, they weren't around two thousand before, the beef, means there's that. There's going to become a point where they're going to want some improvement in their community, and to be honest, the community doesn't really have the resources to do that. Plus, they work here, I mean, they're realtors and doctors and dentists in our, in our community, many of them are on our boards. Um, actually, there's one city council member that is on one of our boards, there's another one essentially going to be appointed to the red commission. They see themselves as our Kansas City community residents, even though often they're confused and baffled when I tell them that they can't be on the planning commission. The only board where that really matters, and, um, I think when that generation is fully running Parkerville, there would be a lot more of an opening. You know, it's communities that work together, which it needs to be, we're about five, ten years out from that, but this is probably a plan where we need to start saying, hey, let's, let's get serious about pressuring them to, hey, can we at least plan our community growth together, because we're obviously going to affect each other. We're going to provide all the businesses and services and schools, and you're going to provide the homes, and we need to, we need to pull out a part where, there's no, there's no way. Now we're sort of stuck in a static area down there. So, to me, that's, it is, it's growth management, I guess, but it's also political. But to some extent, you know, we feel the same way, you know, eventually, if we keep growing, they keep growing, and it'll blow up, we get inside the, start a field, and we're.
That'd be a totally different conversation there.
You know, but, but that, there is a core to work plan, there is ongoing discussions, I know, between the city managers, that startup field commission level about things, and it's probably a long ways off yet, but it will eventually become a little more reality that we might actually be.
But if you really look at what happened to both days in the past twenty, thirty years, we are slowly.
All the days, allowing Amazon distribution center to plop down between the hospital and start a field, and suddenly, you know.
Suddenly, we're touching each other.
Yeah, you could be, and obviously, that's going to be the dividing line, but how does growth around that be managed?
How, that's the thing, there is an unwritten rule that we're not supposed to pass to the field. But there's nothing that says that we can't.
No, that would be a mess of something. So, and those two communities specifically, I think, you know, I mean, we talked to New Kirk a little bit about extending to the, that number to call, state line to your area there too. But it's hard to find, it's hard, why, so you need to need to incorporate that, I think.
Well, and we are clearly not the so dominant city in this county. You know, we're going to win a little leader. There is a lot.
Yeah, we can definitely.
We have, we've been in there well. So maybe we should have any problem with that too, to mend that relationship.
It's not far off from North Avenue, Times Park, it's short of those. Actually, I think that distance is less than the distance from Times Park to Sky. Pretty close. We, we still have the future land use map to talk about, and I don't think we want to talk about that.
Extraterritorial zone, is that on there?
Was that a part of the, yeah, so for us, that.
Not, sorry, I am an annexation, that's the only thing that's on there.
Could we tackle the rest of the discussion?
Oh, yeah, I think, it's seven thirty, we've been here for two hours.
Yeah.
We're good.
I'm glad, yeah.
We, we did that against, actually, the hot topic of the nineteen ninety-five to oh five was the topic of urban sprawl. Just land grab, land grab, land grab, we'll, we'll kind of reverse engineer it along the way, and, uh, a lot of cities, not just small towns, larger communities got in this spot where they said, wait, now we got to do our transport, they figured that out, we got to do sewer lines, we did that. We got, you know, all, all this infrastructure we got to build because we just grabbed, and, and extended that.
Yeah, it was a big, it was a big.
Yeah, so it.
Yeah, some of our, some of our biggest cities in this country are biggest corporates. And what we should be doing in the small city is, what do you, how did they, how did they fix it? How did a city like, say, in there?
Yeah, that was one of the models cities they actually used with, uh, a couple of years ago, they talked on the, some conferences. Was how were they strategically doing that, they actually, the other one they offered was the, what's it? What's it, Minneapolis and.
What you look at is a city like New York City who's never experienced that problem before. And why, why are they on that sprawl?
Well, look at the body, it's their own way.
Yeah, those are my, well, before you guys adjourn, I do want to congratulate, commend Charles, because he provided us a steady hand at a time, we weren't anticipating so much change. Like you said, big shoes to fill, but in the future, as we're criticizing this and something on, you know who to call if you don't like New Hampshire. Commissioner, hopefully, you will be a sympathetic voice.
Sure.
To these kind of.
V R five or nine. Well, the good thing too is we already have an ally.
Well, it's going to happen as well.
So we actually have two, that's, that will be behind all of us.
It is ideal with, yes, planning commission, also, keep that in back of your mind if you're thinking about how you want to grow your political career, but, yeah.
Don't forget us, little guy.
I'm, 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 okay, honestly, I, I have big C functions because I feel like we've really done Yelman's work, I, I, the, the tone that Andy Patton said as chairman for this, took this, I thought, to a new level, and, uh, so I, I I walk away from this wishing, and, you know, there's a part that says, I'd like to stay and see the inclusion of the matter. And it can remind you.
You won't see it.
This is a problem with me.
Anytime you want.
Motion second to adjourn, any opposed? I thought I'd do that one first, all in favor, we're adjourned, thank you, guys.